Hello.
Hi Mercedes.
Hope everyone's doing well today. So for today, we're going to look at our May agenda. And then we're also going to talk about some of our next steps, including I want to try to put together some like maybe some mini groups. As we're starting to kind of get into our recommendations and prioritizing. So be sort of like subcommittees like this one, but maybe like one time kind of subcommittees that necessarily ongoing unless folks think we should have some ongoing touch points as we're trying to kind of start to consolidate our recommendations for our final report. So let's see, sorry, I'm looking for my handwritten notes, of course, always take a look there.
So is somebody able to enable the chat part? Right now it says chat is only available during the meeting.
Um, I, I'm not sure if that that might be a setting for your computer because I I can use the chat.
All right. I think I will go out and try to come back in again because something's not working.
Okay, we'll give it a minute. Thank you, Mary. Let's see, who else do we have with us today? Andre.
Good afternoon. My first meeting with you all, happy to be here. Taking the place of Swayta, who has been great and informative and looking forward to it.
Thank you for being here. We'll definitely miss Swayta, but we're still excited to meet you. Thanks for being here. It's a very interesting time to come in, right? We've been doing a ton of information gathering. I'm sure that was a bit much. Hopefully we can catch you up to speed.
Yes.
Okay, so what I have in my notes for our presentations for May are reporting requirements. And that leaves us with just one more item on our list, which is going to be mechanism for ongoing review. After we look through this draft here, we'll talk about the mechanism for ongoing review and then the subcommittee idea. So, okay. A standard agenda, our same kind of run of show here. Hey, Mary Ann, welcome back. Did that work for you?
It still says chat is only available during the meeting.
Oh, weird. Are you able to see the little hi I put in the chat?
Yes.
Weird.
Oh, Mary Ann, can you try to use the chat and see if it'll work for you? I I think it's just saying that you can only use it while you're in the meeting. After the meeting, it's closed.
You can only use chat after the meeting is closed?
No, during the meeting. After the meeting ends, you can no longer use the chat. I think it's just notifying you of that. Can you try to put something in the chat and see if it's working for you?
Yeah, there's a a grayed out bar that says chat is only available during the meeting. And then when I go to code of the chat, it's disabled. There's nothing there. You can see the arrow and you can see the reactions and everything, but you can't put anything in it. But that's okay. I'll just, I'll mention later what I wanted to put in there.
Okay. Um, all right. So this is where we have for our agenda so far. Just as we've done before, a call to action, public comment, we'll have the departments do their last round of presentations. And we'll have a break and then the DOJ presentation. Have we gotten any additional feedback from DOJ on that, Amy, or are they like good to go with what they've prepared?
They've confirmed that they will be there. I think they're bringing a couple of extra folks with them. And they have got a PowerPoint presentation and they're prepared to come and speak to us. So they're excited about it.
Great. And are they just bringing the, do you know if they're just bringing the presentation about kind of like their role in the contracting government process? Because then we are all, we were also working on like additional questions that we were trying to send them.
I will have to double check with them. I did send them the questions. I'm just not sure if they were able to address all of them. So I'll have to double check with them and see what what else they're bringing besides the presentation and I'll confirm with you by email.
That'd be great. Just so that when we introduce them, we make sure we give everybody a good sense of, you know, what kind of content they're going to cover. Because I think we have a lot of content we're interested in them covering. And so I want to make sure to give people a good sense of, you know, that this is because we've kind of now bucketed out into like global questions as well as like just specifically their role. So if it's just going to be one, one or the other, I just want to make sure we give the task force that primer at the beginning of the meeting. So thank you for doing that follow up. Um, okay. Any questions about the way the agenda is currently looking?
I would like to add one thing, not necessarily to this agenda, but I had sent a link to Amy, which is called Better Contracts of Better Contract for New York, a joint task force to get nonprofits paid on time dated February of 2022. And it's basically their recommendations and how they laid it out and the matrix, which I thought was fabulous. And if we could put that in our shared resources and then just mention it. Because I think it would give a lot of our people that are anxious about how we're doing, I think they would see, especially if they look at the appendix on page nineteen and twenty. I think that would really make them feel more secure in where we're headed and what we've gathered so far and how we will be able to answer these questions.
Okay, Amy, what do you think about like sending, when we send out the agenda, maybe just attaching that as some like extra, you know, or additional recommended reading that people can look through?
Yes, I think that sounds great. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, I love these little resources that are popping up. And I love the fact that like we're not the only ones doing this, right? This is a thing that's happening all over the place. Okay, so a little bit kind of digging into our look ahead and we can kind of decide how much of this we want actually in the agenda. So next month, we would be moving, in my kind of mind, we would be moving into starting to do some prioritization. I'm starting to kind of consolidate around a lot of the information that we've gotten, like what feels most important and timely. There's one more element of kind of our six elements, which was the mechanism for ongoing review. I'm not sure we need a lot of agency input on this one. I think we've actually heard all already a little bit from staff on like their recommendations around this kind of concept. You know, people mentioned like communities of practice and stuff like that. But I think the mechanism for ongoing review is really a question for the task force. Like after we've done all of this work and we made all these recommendations, what do we think the state should be doing to keep carrying that forward? So I kind of feel like that's something that that we need to grapple with and kind of create a few options around like what that might look like. But I'd love to hear, you know, Mary Ann from you and Andre, I know you're new, but if you have an opinion about like for for this particular one, if this is a place where we feel like we need agency presentations or if it's more of a conversation among us as the task force.
And I agree, I think it should be, you know, quarterly. Or, you know, we can decide on frequency and and what form it takes based on what they've told us already is there. But standardization of whatever it is across all agencies would be the most important thing for me.
Yeah, and it's really about like what is, because everybody has their own set of like rules and, you know, jurisdictions there, we're basically suggesting something fairly new, which is like, what is the way that each of these agencies continue to come back around these recommendations? And identify like where they've had progress. It sounds like a lot of them have also recommendations for each other and like having a more ongoing space where people can unearth those, sounds like something we've heard from the department. So yeah, I'm not sure we need a full presentation on this one. I can pull up if if you want to see, I can pull up the questions that we've had on this topic. Because when we do like our our jam board activity. Let's see. So like, you know, the unknown of the biennium, that's come up a lot. Some regular review process, a lean process. You know, kind of these questions about investment, the dashboards, the office of nonprofit partnership, right? So like, these are all just kind of like very open, I think, ended recommendations around. And we could, I think, make even a list of a couple of things and then have state agencies kind of identify what makes most sense. We've already heard about like this dashboard, you know, kind of like shared database type system. I think we've heard that from a couple of different agencies that they are in support of a concept like that. And they see the usefulness in it. You know, some kind of, whether it's like a regular group that's meeting, this is probably something that needs to be, you know, convened by either like an office like this or something like that. And not all these are necessarily like, it would really be up to the legislature and the governor on whether or not they wanted to establish something more formal or have some informal things happening like those communities of practice groups that we heard that a lot of the agencies are are in. So this, yeah, so this one feels like we can maybe come up with some recommendations around this, just in more generative discussion. So that would mean that for June, we actually wouldn't really have presentations, right? We would end up more doing something around trying to have some facilitated discussion just among our group.
I found it really interesting and I sent this question to see if there was such a thing. So the city of New York actually has a office of nonprofits. So I thought that was very interesting. We don't have anything like that in Oregon.
Nope. And that's even something that folks have been talking about at the federal level is an office of like nonprofit partnership or nonprofit liaison. So I think I think we're well within trend to be recommending something like that. And that could then end up being the vehicle for holding a lot of these recommendations that might take a long time. Like if we do make a recommendation, for example, around a shared like grant management platform where agencies are able to share information about grantees. That's probably going to take a few years, right? Like there would be scoping, costing out and then development maintenance. And so having an office that would carry that over, you know, over the time until it's actually operational, I think would be really beneficial. And I think that could probably be true of several of the recommendations that we make that they just, they're going to take time, like nothing's going to happen overnight. And short of having a body like this, like a task force that keeps meeting to keep getting report backs, which I think is maybe an interim option, right? Like if we make a recommendation around an office of nonprofit partnership and then we also say like the task force should continue to be quarterly until the office is set up. You know, I can see those types of recommendations folding in so that we have some, something, some center of accountability around making sure we didn't do all this. And then it just kind of sits, right?
I was, I had a link to the or Lane County Board of Commissioners and I was watching that. And one of the things that's happening for a lot of people that tuned into that is we're on hold. There's a bottleneck because OHCS is going to be releasing a lot of the dollars from Senate Bill fifteen thirty, sixty five million dollars for homeless programs. But we're in, we're in our budget, but budgeting process right now and they haven't released anything. And so Lane County and the city don't have any idea of what to do because they don't know what's going to happen with that, those funds being released. There's nothing I can find about a deadline of when that will even happen. And we're getting down to having to put ours into the county and the city to get our funding starting for July first. All of that.
Yeah, those are, I think, and that's exactly the kind of thing like if we had an office or an ongoing body, like it would become a place where those kind of issues can be, you know, reported up in a more formal way. So there can be some problem solving around it. And I would not be surprised also if we ended up with a recommendation also around like timeline of of programming, right? And trying to create, because I think we've talked about timeline a lot, you know, how long does an application take? How long does a review take? How long does it take to get an invoice done, right? Like there's lots of different types of timelines that are built into a lot of this. And some of them are so deeply internal to the state agencies that it feels it feels like delay, even though they're actually on time, right? It's just that we don't know what the on time is. And so I think the more we unearth those things, the better.
I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for like prioritization, right? So, you know, maybe there's some things that are identified that, you know, we can say, these are things that we can check in on in six months. And then there's a list of things where it's like, this might take a year before we actually get some real feedback on that. So maybe like a breakdown, like break the recommendations down into that, into sort of categories like that in terms of receiving feedback on and which things kind of are sooner rather than later.
So that leads right into the other thing I want us to do in June, which is, oh, hello, Felice, welcome. The other thing I think we should do with our June meeting is have have actually a decision-making discussion about how we will prioritize our recommendations. Because we're going to have a lot of stuff. We already have a lot of stuff. I have a draft of like potential recommendations that have just been building up over time. And we're going to need to figure out how to consolidate those. Or we're going to need to figure out like some sort of voting mechanism or some sort of waiting mechanism. And so I think we should use a good chunk of our June meeting to just talk about that. Like now that we've gotten all this information, you have a sense of the things that are important to you. How do we start building a way for us to get to some consensus? And I think that can both be, I mean, we can be really formulaic about it, like give things scores, right? We can be very democratic about it and do voting. But I think we should have a discussion with the with the larger group to try to come to the, come to some of those. And I think that's probably what I would I would probably put on the table those two options, right? Like either we build a rubric together and we start scoring our recommendations in order to prioritize them. Or we do this very democratic and we and we vote, right? And a little D democratic, right? We'll, we'll do like a vote on each recommendation in order to determine some priority. Yeah.
Very sorry for being late and I've missed about twenty minutes of context, so I apologize. I know one of the things that I'm sort of excited about and like, I hope that we do in our recommendations is around like divvying it up based on like cost and is this like a legislative change? So I, maybe that's involved in the the rubric somehow, because I think there's things that are like, oh, that's kind of a cultural change within the agency versus, oh, you know, having a data, a statewide database, like that's a, that's huge. That would be expensive. And so, yeah, maybe that comes up as a top priority. But it has a thirty million dollar price tag. And we, we have to, we have to be candid about that, so.
Yeah, I think, no, I think that's great. So I heard from Andre, long term versus short term. And then legislative versus admin. I think those are great lenses.
And I love, and Andre, I love the idea of us doing something time-based, you know, and then then doing one, two, three, four under each one, you know? Here's our first priority under this short term. Here's our second priority under the short term, that kind of thing.
Yeah. One, one more thing, sorry. As we get a list of, this might be more for the June discussion, but as we start working on our list of recommendations, will we be able to ask the state agencies what it might cost to do some of this? So that, so that it is, it's truly informed. I mean, I, I know, I think we all know, we're going to get so much pushback about anything that costs more than five dollars. And so we need to come with as much information as possible. And if we ask now, maybe we could have that by our September, October report.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's going to be true of some things, right? Like I think some things we may be able to get some cost estimates around. Some things might just be really, really complicated to get a cost estimate around. You know, like, for example, one of the, one of the recommendations that I I think might come out of this is around the de minimis, right? And using that fifteen percent. So to some degree, that costs nothing, because if it's just your fifteen percent admin, it doesn't necessarily change your total budget. You're just allowed to use more of it for the admin, right? And so it should, in some cases, be relatively cost neutral. In other places, though, where, for example, we have, if we have state agencies who are giving zero percent, trying to shift between zero and fifteen may actually require putting more money into that, into that contractor grant, right? And like fiddling around with five percent here or there is a lot easier than increasing, than like finding fifteen percent from zero. So I think we should do our best to also hear out the agencies when they, in the sense of like, what, how much of a cost estimate can you give us? Like recognizing that all of it's going to be caveated. So we may end up with like maybe some ranges like that. But yeah, I think wherever we can, cost would be great.
Did we ever get any, an answer as to why some of them do de minimis and some don't? Did we ever get answers that made sense?
Not to me. Yeah, I mean rationales, I got rationales, but I didn't necessarily get a good reason.
Yeah. Well, the rationale is that's why we're having this committee, because they're not fully funding and there you go. We just got something the other day that said they were going to cut one of our programs by twenty eight percent. And, yeah, and and they'd already cut it thirty, thirty-three percent last year. So it's like, okay, well, then we have to decide whether we can do the program anymore. Or is there more funding coming from OHCS fiscal year twenty five that we can't see yet? But you can't see what you can't see.
And I think that goes into the other discussion that we've had, which could also turn into a recommendation, which is going back to that timeline, right? That we're, we're both trying to live on a fiscal year and we're also trying to make programs happen on a fiscal year. And they, and they're not, they're not tracking well. And if we were to make a recommendation, for example, that like the fiscal year runs June to July or July to June, but a program year would run January to December. So you always know there's a six-month delay from approval of the biennium to the beginning of the program. But that means there's also a six-month off-ramp that like if something's not funded or if it's defund, if it's defunded or decreasing funding, you've got six months to wind down into the new reality. Now, it's that second part where I don't know exactly all the like legislative rules that allow or disallow basically paying for six months into the next fiscal year, right? So it's that kind of thing that we would need to figure out. But I could see like that kind of recommendation being made to exactly that point, which is like, we can't be continuing to build core community work on smoke and mirrors and estimates, right? Like we need actual, if you want us to work on a reimbursement basis in particular, it's just not working anymore.
So I have one more question. So I came, this came to me recently. So I've worked in Lane County and done Lane County contracts for over ten years. I started in twenty ten. So, but now it's come to my attention that St. Vincent de Paul, who I work for, could go directly to the feds or directly to those government sources instead of going through Lane County. Lane County takes a huge chunk of admin. And then, and then we have, then we have no admin. So we can't get our fifteen percent because of where they're taking their bite out of. Like that. And so I wonder how many of the agencies that we're talking with right here have that problem where by the time it gets to them, there's no admin left for them to do the program.
Yeah, I know. I think we know for sure that's happening. That's what, that's what was coming from like people getting zero percent even on federal grants where they should be getting the de minimis. Because the state is, is taking that or it's not sharing that, you know, it's not creating an equal proportion for that amount.
And it's clear, there's not, sorry, I get so frustrated. It's clear there's no guidelines or at least no like consistent guidelines across agencies and even departments. And so I just, I really feel for y'all. This is, this is tough.
Yeah. I think that's also a, oh, go ahead.
I would say I personally think that it's a violation of the federal guidelines. I think, I think literally the state of Oregon is violating federal guidelines when they keep the de minimis to themselves. I don't think we're going to get the DOJ to tell us the task force that that's information they're going to keep between them and the state agencies. But I think that's something we need to keep lifting up.
I think that's also a compelling argument for, like, in I think that's also a compelling argument for um, like a nonprofit office. Because there are certain agencies, uh, depending on size, who don't have the capacity internally, um, you know, to be the grant administrators as well. And so, you know, I, I come from, my previous role is, is at Metro in the Portland area, and we didn't have capacity in putting out grants to administer them. So we put them through organ, other organizations. So I had a workforce development uh program that we were administering through Work Systems, Inc., for example, and Work Systems, Inc. was taking a big chunk of the, the funds um as their admin fee. So I think, you know, if there was that one office, right, then we could kind of eliminate that issue.
And, and or at least uh make it clear to legislators that if you want $2 million to go into services, you actually have to budget more than $2 million. Because if you budget $2 million, not all of that is going to the community. And I think that's a big misunderstanding that, that some legislators do have. Uh, maybe not the legislators who work on the budget in ways it means they may know, but I think a lot, I think a lot of them think, oh, that, all that money is going into the work. When um, you know, the, the department needs also its own. As you mentioned, like if they're going to ask, be asked to do more work, they need sometimes more staff. And sometimes it feels like that's accounted for. And sometimes it is not. So one of my other recommendations, in order to uh get us to a nice, robust June meeting where we are talking about our mechanism for ongoing review and we're having this prioritization conversation, is to set up a series of small committees. So very transparently, I, I would very much have liked for me and the co-chair to be able to do one-on-one meetings with each task force member and understand their priorities, understand their learning so far, um, what information they still need, um, you know, what their most, um, what their like half-to-haves are. But since we've been told we cannot do that, um, the alternative is to set up um some smaller subcommittees where we would do that. Where uh me and Mary Ann, um, and Mary Ann, you can, I don't want to, I, I'm 100% volunteering to do this, because this is going to be a whole bunch of additional meetings. If you don't feel like you have the time in your schedule, please don't feel obligated to attend all of them. Um, but I would, I would offer to set up a series of these meetings and do like three people max, right? So that there's a lot of conversation time able to be had. So we have really small groups. Um, so like three people, um, which uh, so I have this list of days and times. And then I'm going to drop in the chat. And so these would be windows of time and we'd ask people to sign up for uh, a meeting that would work for their schedule. We would need to um, schedule them and post them as public meetings. So um, it's more meetings for you too, Amy. I'm so sorry. Um, but we would have like, uh, we'd post these as public meetings. So that way we're in compliance with our rules. Um, and then we would try to kind of organize people into these different groups and then have these subcommittees meet between um, between this month's task force meeting and, and next month's task force meeting. So, so that at least I am able to come into those meetings, having um, you know, made sure that I have a list of potential recommendations that includes everybody's half-to-haves. Um, I've noted where those half-to-haves are. That's going to, I think, make it easier to even have a conversation about like, how do we prioritize? If we have a sense of how far away or close we already are to some consensus around things. Um, we would need to make a motion for this at the meeting. The group would need to agree, like we can't, remember, we agreed that we were gonna, if we did any sort of subcommittees, it would be a joint decision among the task force to set up additional subcommittees. Um, and so we would need someone to make a, a motion and then we would take a vote of the group. So what are folks, what do folks think about that concept?
I love that. And I was thinking, you know, when you open with, you know, the question to get everybody involved at the start of the meeting, maybe one of, one or two of these meetings that we have coming up, our regular meetings, you could ask some of the questions that you were just saying we want to cover in that, so that everybody could hear some of the answers. Even if they weren't involved in that three-person meeting, they would, we could discuss it and have a, a portion of the time to do that.
Yeah, and I think if we're able to do these, like, then that becomes an easy, an easier check-in question in June and July, because we will have now started socializing. Um, the idea that we want to hear what your pri, what your personal priorities are after having heard all this information and where you think. And I, and I do definitely want to anchor it in not just what um recommendations are most important to you, but what recommendations are most important to you that you believe will achieve higher wages, right? Because at the end of the day, that is our North Star. So there are some, I think, administrative things that we all like, but I want to make sure that we're able to tie back our top recommendations to how we think they'll help us improve wages.
I would like to ask Andrea a question. One of the things that's coming up for us, we do homeless and emergency services at St. Vincent de Paul. One of the things that's coming up is a lot of federal Medicaid dollars that's available for mental health care and behavioral health and billing, billing through Medicaid. I, I think I said that wrong, but anyway, um, and uh, the, the ability for all kinds of nonprofits of all different sizes to be able to get the infrastructure, to be able to do those kind of billings to make the programs more funded, other than just going through Oregon. Funding them through Medicaid.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know if I understand the question. Should you just ask it different, maybe?
Okay, so St. Vincent de Paul does homeless and emergency services for unhoused folks, both families and individuals. And one of the things that we've been told is there are Medicaid dollars to help with some of that. And then it's the training on how big and small nonprofits could actually do Medicaid billing.
That's not something I'm familiar with.
All right.
Unfortunately, yeah, sorry.
Um, okay, um, hopping back to kind of our strategy here. Okay, I see your note, Felicia. So um, oh, you're suggesting open up this, the subcommittee groups to task force members and um, the legislators.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I think that's critical. Yeah, I guess I'm just mindful of like your busy schedule and, like, I mean, Senator Campos works full-time. Um, uh, so I, I guess I'm just saying like, I, I know they're, they're not technically a vote, but it's like, if they can't get excited about the things we're proposing, that makes our jobs a lot harder.
Yeah, no, agreed. Um, yes, and so I did drop in the chat what would be my proposed schedule. Um, so I tried to put in there evening times and morning times. I, I really actually couldn't find a good window of time in the middle of the day. So the best I could do was at 10:30 to noon. That's my middle-of-the-day uh offer. It was much easier morning and evening to find a few days. But I wonder if someone can help me do a little bit of math. Is this enough meetings? I've got six of them in here. And we've got 13 task force members? And is that include, that, is that including or not including the legislators? So is it 15 with them?
I was going to say it's.
It's 15 with the legislators. I'm sorry, Felicia.
No, I was wrong. So thank you, Amy.
Okay, so 15, so six meetings uh for 15 people. That should be, I think, enough variety to have no more than three per meeting. Uh, would anybody be willing to make this motion at the May meeting?
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
I printed this out and.
And then, um, Amy, uh, I wonder if on our agenda then for the May meeting in our look ahead, if we can put in there um, like a, a deci- decision-making additional subcommittees? So that folks know that we'll have um a decision, a decision-making question called. And then maybe we put June and we can uh, under the look ahead as well, that the June meeting would be mechanism for ongoing review and structure of prioritization, structuring prioritization. Is that too many, is that too many words? Am I using like $10 words there? And I can use something simpler. Structuring prioritization just sounded like a mouthful when I said it, um, even though it made sense in my head.
How about prior, 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 prioritizing recommendations?
Yeah.
Ongoing review and prioritize, prioritizing recommendations.
Okay, yes, I think that works.
So is this one technically a vote? Because we are going to ask for the motion. Is it a vote, uh, like a official vote or no?
Yes, I think we said that we needed to have majority support to establish subcommittees in our charter.
Thank you.
And only one of those times works for you? Oh, no. Okay, well, hopefully if we need to create more time slots.
There's a conference in early June, so it just wipes out that week, so. But thank you Mercedes, I, this is really helpful. Thank you.
Cool. Okay, so we'll, we'll call that um, decision-making point. I'll do a little uh PowerPoint presentation for notes and I'll drop these dates so we, so we can have a little bit of a visual when we do the vote. Amy, I'm wondering if you have a recommendation on, should we, in the meeting, decide who's going to which meeting? Or should we do like, um, can we do like some sort of like Google form signup or doodle or something?
Yeah, I think if we do it during the meeting, that could get a little bit messy. I think if we had um a poll or a survey and just how folks pick the dates that they want to come to, that would be an easier way to manage it. I can get it prepared for you and then we can just drop the link in the chat and have folks um choose it that way if that works for you.
That sounds lovely. Thank you.
You are good, Amy. Thank you.
You bet. No problem.
Okay. So then, looking forward, we would have July and August. So June, July and August um, are really these, these like getting into our prioritization conversation. So June, we'll set ourselves up. We'll have done some preview of what some of the potential recommendations might be. And then I guess June and July, we're just debating, right? We're debating on what makes the top of the list, what makes the bottom of the list, and if there's anything that just doesn't make the list.
Um, are we doing a formal presentation to any legislative body? Is that like on an agenda?
I think we, we are, I think we're required to report to the legislature in September. Whether that is a live presentation or a submittal of information, I think might be up to the legislators. I think they, so we may, that may be a question. I don't know who we asked that question to. Because I don't think the legislation stipulated whether or not it was just a submittal or a live presentation. Obviously, I would love to do a presentation for somebody.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. And, and I think in what they gave us in the original, it was just, they talked about the size of the recommendations document that we were going to put in. I don't think they talked about.
Mercedes, how about I do, I try to be helpful and I dig a little bit about what, like, I, I mean, I, I could ask Senator Campos um, about like, yeah, so let me do that.
Are you allowed to ask Senator Campos a question?
Oh, that's a good point. But it, it's not about an agenda item. It's about.
So.
I guess, I don't have to ask her. I could ask um the Speaker's office. I could ask the Pres, the Senate President's office. I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, it's great. It's great. I just want to make sure you don't get in trouble. So maybe, maybe checking in with her staff.
Yeah.
In the project plan on page three of six, it says, submit a report to an interim committee of the Legislative Assembly with a copy to the DAS director, executive summary of no more than two pages and may include recommendations for legislation.
Yeah. So, and, and I think what we're um reflecting on is that sometimes those submittals are actual live presentations, like a committee will actually have people come before them during like legislative days and do a full presentation. Um, or it could just be a submittal without that additional. But I think we would prefer an opportunity to have a presentation and be able to do that. So um, Felicia, thank you for volunteering um to check in with Senator Campos's staff and see if they have any additional direction on how we can best prepare. Um, one other thing, and I feel like this has just continued to fall off my radar, but we had at one point kind of topped a facilitator. Ultimately, I've just been facilitating the meetings. I do wonder if we need uh some support with a writer. I'm not going to pretend like I write the best reports on the face of the planet, like I can do a memo. But I, I'm, I'm sure we want to have, make sure we have something that um feels really professional and really reflective of all the hard work that's been put in here. And so I'm wondering if either uh Amy, from you, if that's a resource within DAS, or if that's something that we should look outside of DAS to try to find some support with a technical writer.
And wasn't, didn't Helen Wong say there has, there was some money from Meyer Memorial Trust that we could use for part of this too?
Um, so I think that was for an additional report, so similar to the one you found from New York. Um, I think NAO and Meyer are going to be sharing with us a similar report probably in May or June.
Fabulous.
And I would be happy, Mercedes, to check in with Debbie Dennis to see if this would be a resource from within DAS. Um, I know that the task force still does have some dollars um that we might be able to procure or contract with someone outside of DAS, if that's what we need to do. So let me do a little bit of research and I'll get back with you on that.
Okay, that would be fantastic. And then, if anybody knows anybody writers and have that like on deck in the background, I'm trying to think of like people who I know who, who have already done work with the state. It's probably some of the easiest people to engage with.
The first person that comes to mind is Chris Mock, who did a great job with the SHS um Oversight Committee and taking 20 opinions and condensing it into a, a report that is thoughtful and understandable. And I, I really envy that skill. I was really impressed. And then, maybe I missed this in the first 20 minutes. Did we talk about how we're going to talk about the mechanism for ongoing review?
Um, more, so we looked at uh what had come up in the Jam Board a little bit and um, more or less, I think they kind of fall into three buckets. One is like internal administrative support, like the uh, communities of practice that the different departments talked about, that like, a lot of them have regularly scheduled meetings with all of their contract staff to be able to share best practices and problem solve and making that something that's um inter-agency. Um, we talked about like whether or not this, our recommendation is that this task force or a version of this task force lives on. Um, and it's something that continues to meet and follow recommendations to their next step. Um, and then the, the other one was uh, like an Office of Nonprofit Partnership, um, and actually recommending that you know, a more uh higher-level, consistent, um professional uh space be developed. And it's possible that we recommend all three of those things. Um, so we kind of decided that what we would do is have more of a, a discussion with the group, like kind of put those things out there. This is what came up in the Jam Board. You know, what, what would we think about these types of recommendations? Kind of felt like we maybe didn't need presentations from the agencies on that one. Um, like the community of practice one is actually directly from them, right? Like they've mentioned that in several presentations, so we can kind of take what we've heard from the agencies instead of making them present again. And uh, just kind of make it part of our, uh, our discussion as maybe like one of our first pieces of practicing this, like how we prioritize. So that would be in June. So June, the big topics of that meeting will be this question and having the group um discuss options. And then the other part of that meeting would be. And then the other part of that meeting would be us agreeing on what our structure is for how to prioritize. So we could even do that first, the structure of how to prioritize, and then like test it a little bit with like the mechanism for ongoing review. Not do like a formal vote, but just be like, so if we were to take these three examples, you know, and, and run it through whatever process we've agreed to, like what would that look like? So we can try to start to formalize what that will look, what, how that will move forward. And hopefully also by then, we'll have examples of other recommendations. Again, I think one of my hopes is that in doing these individual, well, not individual, these small group meetings, is that I get a sense of where are we already consolidating around? And what are the things on the edges that only one or two people are talking about?
Very helpful. Thank you.
So that's May and a draft of June? Yes, Amy.
Just a quick question on the semantics for these listening meetings that you want to have with the task force. As I'm putting together the survey, do I limit it to only three slots for each meeting time so that we don't overfill the meetings? Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood that correctly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And if we run into any trouble, like, like, everybody wants to do the same day, and they're not available any other day, we'll, we'll figure that out. But hopefully, this is enough times, enough variability of time, that everyone other than Felicita has more than one option that they can throw in there.
So could we do, say, say, uh, May 29 from 8:30 to 10 was the most popular, and six people wanted to be there? Could we do it and then have two rooms? I don't, I don't know. I'm asking if.
I hope that's not a problem. You have to do one.
Right, right.
I think those would have to be two separate public meetings happening simultaneously, if we wanted to keep. Because I, because I think we have to, part of it is we have to, like, a member of the public needs to be able to watch, is essentially like. And so if we had two meetings, and they would have to be two separate meetings, which, I mean theoretically, you know, we, we, we could, but I don't love that idea, because then there's a meeting I'm not in. And so that I'm not, you know, not gathering the information.
Okay, got it.
And Mercedes, does someone get to interview you about what's important to you?
I am not concerned at all about the things that I care about making onto this list. Like, I really feel like, I don't know, I feel like I really trust the group, and I feel like the questions people have asked, and the kind of early recommendations that are coming from different people. I think I see what I, what I'm hoping for in a lot of people's comments, and a lot of people's concerns, and a lot of people's hopes. So I'm not, and I think that's why I've maintained facilitating. Like, if I felt like I wasn't act, I wasn't able to participate, and I wasn't, get, like, the conversation wasn't getting to where I felt it was important for it to go, I probably would have called for the facilitator, so I could be more of an active participant. But I have been really, really impressed with what people are bringing to the table, and what questions people are asking, and how folks are, are being really good about connecting things back to wages and stuff. So I, I don't know, I, I feel like, I feel like I'm seeing it, I'm, I'm seeing the things that I know are important. But I guess the answer would be no. There then wouldn't be anybody interviewing me. Is that a problem? Do other people think that's a?
Oh, I don't, I mean, I, I'm just mindful. I mean, I think that you bring so much expertise and thoughtfulness to this work, and you'll be able to combine what's in your head and what's with everybody else's, so. I'm not terribly worried. I think you are extremely vocal in the things you care about. I, I'm not worried. I'm just mindful that. If you didn't feel that way, then I would be concerned.
Thank you. No, thank, thank you for looking out. I really appreciate that. And yeah, I, I think in a, in a different group where people weren't bringing up the things that I, that I'm worried about, you know, that might be a concern for me. But I, like I said, I've been really impressed by the conversations we've had so far and, and the input that people have given. So I feel, I don't know, I feel good about our group and, and where we're at. And I think we're going to get into the hard part, where, where it's like, can't have everything. And the things that we want, we might also not be able to have immediately, right? So how do we feel good about the recommendations that we put out there, knowing that, for a lot of us, these things needed to have happened a couple of years ago now? And a lot of them are going to have a couple of years to go before we really see the, the big changes. But I think that's the hardest part for me, is how to not, how to maintain good expectations while not feeling like a wet blanket.
I love how positive you are. A couple of years.
That's right. Just a couple of years. I'm not taking decades. I'm not doing it. But I also, also always believe in ongoing work. So in a couple of years, all of these things will have gotten started, I do believe. It may not all be done, but they will all have gotten started, I do believe, that are the recommendations that we put out there are not like, I think there's too much energy around this. I don't think we're going to have things sitting on shelves. I'm, I feel very optimistic about that.
I, I really want to take the time for us to thank all the members that they're behind it, and that they know it's not going to happen tomorrow, and that their purpose is being served just by setting up the structure and asking the questions.
Yeah, I think this is big to have, and I think it's also absolutely incredible, just the number of professionals who, who have put their time into this, including the, like, public comment that we've gotten, the additional reports that we have gotten from other people who are also working on this. It does feel like, you know, a very, what's the word, I'm looking for, it feels like there's a lot bubbling up here. And we're, and we're riding this wave. We're not even necessarily creating it, right? There's a lot of energy here. And I think that's what gives me a lot of, a lot of hope and a lot of positivity, that I know that even if I get distracted by a different body of work, there are people who are going to keep pushing this forward too, and that feels really good.
And, and that the governor thought to set up this task force, and the, and the legislature thought to set up this task force at this time.
Well, they needed a little bit of convincing to do it.
But folks push the right buttons, and that's why we're here.
Indeed. Well, if nothing else, I think we can call our agenda-setting meeting closed. Thank you all for jumping in and, and helping us out. Andrea, I guess I would ask with the last few minutes, if you had any questions we can answer, we probably should have started there, because there's just like tons of information that's been thrown at you. But we're happy, I'd be happy to use our last four minutes for any kind of, any of that, I guess.
Sweet has been great. I have been bombarding her with all my questions. So I think I've gotten most of them answered. I've been trying to just get caught up to speed on, on all of the previous meetings and the presentations that you all have been having. So, yeah, I, I, I think I'm in a good place, but of course, it's one of those things where you don't know what you don't know. And so I'm sure there will be more questions, but none right now.
So do all of you know about the free weddings in Oregon? I know Lain County is doing free weddings on May 17. You have to sign up by tomorrow. They're doing weddings, wedding cake, a reception, free weddings. The Oregon lawyers, women lawyers are doing them, and I'm so excited by this. And so all the people that might have been married in another state, because they couldn't get married in Oregon 10 years ago, that can now come and have renewal of the vows or have a wedding. Any, anybody, yeah. So I'm just, I, I love love, so I'm all excited about that one.
It's a very positive note to send this out on. Happy, happy wedding day, everyone.
Thank you.